Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's hearing for Thursday, January 6, 2022, relative to Bills 2021, 2122, and 2021, 2133. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 2122, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan, under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zone in Article Two, Chapter 905, and Article Seven, Chapter 922, for Duquesne University, entitled "Duquesne University Institutional Master Plan", dated September 2021, on property currently zoned EMI Educational Medical Institution District, First Ward, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 2123, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zone in Article One, Section 90203, zoning map by changing from Uptown Public Realm, Sub-District Eight, to Educational Medical Institute, a certain property at 1323 Forbes Avenue, in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System. A portion of the parcel is currently zoned Uptown Public Realm, Sub-District Eight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the record, we are joined by Councilman LaBelle. And... Can't see below there, but... All right, as other members join, I will announce when they arrive. I'm Bobby Wilson, Councilman for District One, Land Use and Economic Development Chair. So for the... For our first order of business, we're going to have an introduction and a presentation by William Gregory from the... From our Cities Planning Department. Also, we have representatives from the applicants. And also, we will be followed by testimony from our registered speakers. So... William?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, council members. My name is William Gregory, President of the Zoning and Development Review Division of the Department of City Planning. I'm here to introduce two council bills, 2021-2122 and 2021-2123. Council bill, and they kind of go apart, they go hand in hand. Council Bill 2021-2122 is a resolution for a 10-year institutional master plan, Duquesne University. Generally, an institutional master plan guides development for large-scale institutions for the plant's 10-year lifespan. Under the proposed institutional master plan, Duquesne University is proposing 11 development projects, a 10-year development envelope. One thing I wanted to bring up briefly is that Project One in the 10-year development envelope, UPMC Cooper Field House Edition, has already been constructed. The project was approved without an amendment to the previous IMP under a sort of Board of Adjustment decision in 2018. And the zoning board approved that with the condition that this project be included in the new IMP's 10-year development envelope. And the Don't Change Ordinance of one parcel only is just to change one parcel that's included, the IMP boundary that is currently zoned UTRA. The ordinance will change that to PMI, so the entire, all parcels within the IMP development zone will be zoned EMI. Funding Commission made a motion to recommend approval of the city council with conditions on June 1st, 2021. The condition was that the applicants continue working with the Department of City Planning staff to refine the treatment along Forbes Avenue for the Red Slide Building. The applicant has addressed these concerns, the institutional master plan dated October 2021, and nailed notice, was sent to the affected property owners and those outside, 21 days before today's council hearing. That's all I have for you. I'll turn it over to the Duquesne team.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, City Council, and Happy New Year. My name is Rod Dobish. I'm the head of facilities here at Duquesne University, and we do appreciate your time today. William, you going to show the presentation?
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up. Can you see that? I can make the full screen.
I can't see it. There you go. Thank you. Yep. So this is the agenda. We want to go over the organization of our IMP, the overview of it, the 10-year development sites. For the record, we don't have anything in the 25-year. We want to focus on the first project, which is our College of Orthopaathic Medicine. Give you some supporting plan information and give you an opportunity if you have any questions for us. Go to the next. We've arranged our IMP based upon the Best Practices Guide that City Planning put together. I will tell you, I was part of the people, person that reviewed this, and it was very helpful. And the performance target meetings that we participated in were helpful as well. I do want to thank William Gregory, Derek Doplin, and Corey Lehman for helping us through this process. They're... You guys, as city council members, you should be proud of the fact that they've worked for the city. They're very good at their job. Wanted briefly go over the mission of Duquesne University. You know, Duquesne, we believe we serve God by serving our students so they can in turn serve others. We're founded by the Spiriton Order. Our university's been here 140 years, and the Spiritons, incidentally, are going to be celebrating their 150th year in existence. So I thought it would be good to give you a little snapshot of our campus. So, well, I don't know if you can go down to Slide Five, maybe easier for people to see. But our university, we have 47 buildings, we're roughly on 50 acres. We have nine schools, 10th is going to be the College of Orthopaathic Medicine. Our enrollment is, you know, south of 9,000. We're hoping to kind of correct that. And we have a variety of varsity sports for men and women. Duquesne is up, located in Uptown. We're proud to be part of this community. And incidentally, I've been here at this university 31 years, so I know Uptown very well. Throughout our IMP process, we've done a lot of public engagement. You can see some of the recognized community organizations that we work with, along with others, and it was a very helpful process. One of the things we kept in mind throughout this whole process is that every one of our projects had to be in line with the Uptown Innovation District. Duquesne University has been an active participant in the creation of this and is still involved today in helping implement some of the strategies. We've done a lot of public outreach, both internally and externally. And again, this was very helpful. We've made some changes based upon some of the inputs that we've got from these engagements. Some of these comments were like, I got a lot of questions about the BRT, which we're a great supporter of, how we're going to activate the corridor on Forbes, what about the housing on Forbes, and what some of the amenities we're going to include in these. So it was very, very enlightening getting this. We do have a 10-year development plan. It basically shows the 11 projects that William introduced to you, but we're going to go through and show you each one of these individually. The UPMC Cooper Field House is the first one. As William said, it's completed and was a requirement from the zoning board of administration. The second project is on the lot that we're also asking to be rezoned. We purchased that from Life's Work, and you'll see it's going to be a significant impact in this corridor. And we think we have a beautiful building with a lot of green space and a lot of stormwater management features. The third is a mixed-use academic building, basically on a corner of a parking lot that we have. It'll probably be focused on a medical type use or health-related profession, but that's going to be later as we build these out. Number four is a visitors' locker room. Our visitor, we call it home field advantage here at Duquesne, our visiting football teams have to change on our pool deck. So we fundraised for this. We will be building a visitors' locker room. Our press box that was built in 1994 showing its age. We're going to replace the existing press box, probably not as a modern feature, but basically the same look as the existing one. We're looking at doing a perimeter wall on our campus side of the field for additional seating. And then, very small addition of athletic offices, which is number seven. Eight is a, an alumni house that's part of our strategic plan to engage with our alumni. And nine is a BRT station that we're actually giving up some of our property to actually have that set along Forbes Avenue. And we've been working with the Port Authority to hopefully get that station named the Duquesne University Station. So that's kind of where that project is. And number 10 is the mixed-use Residence Life Building. And as William mentioned to you at the beginning, we did have some things we had to work with both Corey and William on, and we got that resolved. And we're looking forward to doing that. We think these two projects on Forbes is going to help, or three projects is really going to activate that corridor. Right now, there's not much foot traffic there. We think it's going to really activate the corridor. And number 11 is, it's an interesting project because it kind of goes right along with the BRT. There's a section of road along Forbes and Boyd that's going to be shut down as part of the BRT project. And on the corner adjacent to it, we have a building that has a lot of deferred maintenance needs. So we're looking to tear that down and build like a little parklet that our goal is to work with the recognized community organizations, City Planning and others, to kind of make that work along with the part of Boyd Street that's going to be shut down as part of the BRT. You know, as I mentioned, the College of Orthopaathic Medicine is a very, very important project for our university. If one thing I think we all learned during COVID, and still learning, is how short we are physicians. We're hoping that this is going to help bridge some of that gap. You can see there's some data there about the shortages that we have now, what's coming. But, you know, the good thing about these Doctor of Orthopaathic Medicines, they tend to stay local, which is, which is good for this region. The other legislation we talked about, we want to change the zoning to EMI, which is on the Life's Work parcel. So we're hoping that we can get both of those done at the same time. There's a separate legislation going to be coming your way for vacation of a right-of-way in that lot. We've worked with dummy on this. And we're going to, that part of that vacation, we're going to purchase the land for $165,000. It'll, it'll be coming for you through dummy at a later date. I think it would be helpful for everybody now, we have a very, very robust integrated health program here at Duquesne, and it's really gonna enhance, be enhanced more with this College of Orthopaathic Medicine. So we really think, you know, our integrated health has helped the community. We ran vaccination clinics in the Hill District and other places. And we're hoping that this is really gonna take off. The investment in this College of Orthopaathic Medicine is north of $53 million. There's other financial obligations that we have as far as the accrediting body goes. Pushes this number significantly higher. And, you know, there's going to be opportunities for employment here, and we're going to work in partnership with Bill Generec and others to kind of have those opportunities be made to the community. Our orthopaathic medicine design, it's going to have a lot of technology in it. It's going to look at promoting health for the body, mind, and spirit that also fits in with our mission. And we think it's going to be a nice play, a nice facility for this.
Perfect. Thank you, Rod. I'm Lisa Dugan with Up Studio. We are the landscape architects on this project. So as Rod mentioned, we'll just review the kind of overall urban design guidelines and public neighborhood realm is kind of the next focus of this presentation. So Duquesne's open space is really shaped by its urban context and the significant topographic grade change across the campus. And these open spaces should really be reflecting the university's mission, vision, and spiritan values. In addition to the general recommendation and urban design guidelines, which Maria will be reviewing in a couple slides, we also have developed a series of open space guidelines for Duquesne University's campus. So these open space guidelines outline general recommendations for high-quality, high-performance campus landscapes. And we've outlined basically seven key areas, from citing new projects, campus spaces, and connectivity, streetscapes, landscape planting, landscape materials, and sustainability. Now, I just want to note that all of these open space guidelines are also informed by Section 7.2, which outlines the Sustainable Landscape Design Guidelines and Design Principles. And I'll just hop to the next slide, which really focuses on the campus landscape zones. And the Duquesne University campus is comprised of six kind of key landscape typologies that provide opportunities for socialization, recreation, and quiet reflection. Now I'm going to hand this off to Maria at WTW, who will review the overall urban design guidelines.
Thank you, Maria Kierakopoulos with WTW. Reflective of the university's standards, immediate context, and unique functional use through architectural means, some of the pledge that the university has made in this IMP is to continue the trend of utilizing materials, color palettes that are traditional and familiar to the existing campus within a new and contemporary design style, accommodating all types of users, all accessibility, making it a big emphasis on accessibility, maintaining more of the technical aspects of the implementation of this IMP, the 10-foot public sidewalks. Maintain transparency at ground floor level for all their buildings, maintaining a well-defined and articulated entrances to all buildings, ground floor public frontage to enhance the public realm, and activate pedestrian connectivity with complementary architectural design, transparency, and visibility at street level. Also, Duquesne University has a long tradition of improving the public realm with works of art and site features, murals and sculptures throughout the campus and along Forbes Avenue, enriching the environment and reinforcing the university's spirit and identity, and helping to define and enhance the campus. Very strong emphasis on accessibility. There's a series of strategies that have been implemented and will be implemented, signage program and improvements, the creation of the Office of Disability Services, the creation of an accessibility map, pedestrian circulation, analysis and studies throughout Forbes Avenue, bridges to reach the different areas of the campus. And the university has an ongoing system and program of surveying all their buildings, one building per year, to determine the upgrades that those buildings need for signage, compliant with ADAG. And today, this program has been completed in two academic buildings, College Hall and Canaveral Hall. Motivated by its Catholic identity, Duquesne University values equality of opportunity, human dignity, and racial, cultural, and ethnic diversity, both as an educational institution and as an employer. Accordingly, the university prohibits and does not engage in discrimination or harassment on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, age, disability, or status as a veteran. Further, the university will continue to take affirmative steps to support and advance these values consistent with the university's mission and statement. And to support this statement, several policies have been implemented, such as the emotional support animals policy, foreign language policies, medical withdrawal policies, retracted accommodations, accommodations for service animals, and testing accommodations policies. There has been an accessibility map created, recognizing the challenges in the topography of the campus. This accessibility map indicates all the locations and the accommodations for reaching multiple spaces, places in the campus through accessible means. Most visitors coming from the campus for the first time will be entering through the Forbes Avenue Garage. There's large signage on Forbes Avenue that directs vehicles to the main entrance. And for pedestrians coming to campus, they're encouraged to make their way to the Forbes Avenue Garage elevators or Power Center elevators on the eighth floor of the main walkway. Several bridges already connect Duquesne University's campus from Forbes Avenue on the neighboring South Side. Multiple amenities have been created along Forbes Avenue. We have Barnes &amp; Noble, Starbucks, multiple restaurants. The university, the Duquesne University's Office of Marketing Communications is currently updating the campus banners, flags, and Forbes Avenue, as well as working on a new gateway signage at the corner of Forbes and McGee to activate the northeast corridor. Continuing discussions for better campus weight finding and creation of a visitors' welcome center between the following departments: Enrollment Management, Conference and Event Services, Marketing and Communications, Auxiliary Services, and Facilities Management. The university will continue to coordinate with city planning. The current Forbes, the current IMP Forbes Avenue Development Plan, in this, what was studied was that ultimate envelope that projects could be reaching based on the current ordinance. However, the university has pledged to limit that growth in order to increase open spaces and limit development in that very important corridor. The current IMP projects, we have a slide that shows renderings of these. Of these, by the way, the slides are not being, they're not moving forward throughout, but if you have access to the slides, we have some examples of the design of the projects are under works. One of them being the College of Orthopaathic Medicine. This project has gone under CDA, but it's in the process of zoning, and this is a project that is under the EMI consideration for the rezoning. And now we're going to switch to Trans Associates, Bob Getz.
Yes, hello. This is Bob Getz from Trans Associates. Our firm performed the transportation and parking aspects of the IMP. Among the transportation demand management items, the university has set a goal of reducing the use of single-occupant vehicles by employees from approximately 80% to 60%, and also reducing that use for students from about 40% to 30%. And how they intend to do that is to enhance campus facilities and facilities adjacent to the campus in terms of active transportation. Our firm did the initial studies for the university back in October of 2018. So this was pre-COVID data, fairly, I'll say was more typical data. How, some of the strategies that would be used would be addition of bicycle repair stations and healthy ride stations. Also, collaboration with the Port Authority for pedestrian upgrades at the Forbes and McNulty intersection. That would include a exclusive pedestrian phase to the traffic signal, and that is being proposed as part of the BRT design. We would also promote ride sharing and carpooling through a website to find matches so folks can participate in that and reduce the use of vehicles. We're also going to encourage employee telecommuting opportunities as part of COVID-19. Obviously, a lot of that has already occurred, so that is already reducing some of the vehicle trips. And lastly, to decrease the cost of the South Side Shuttle that the university runs to promote off-site parking instead. Also, just as part of the BRT project along Fifth and Forbes Avenue, exclusive bike lanes are being proposed there, which should help. And as was mentioned earlier, a BRT station along Forbes at McNulty, obviously to serve the university. So that's kind of a snapshot of the transportation demand goals of the university, and I'm not sure who I'm turning it over to.
So I'm David Chismar. I'm the supervisor of energy management at Duquesne University. So the university has made investments into LEED certification in the deplod residence hall and Power Center recreational facility, achieving LEED Gold and Silver certifications respectively. We've also done a Silver Certification for Interior Renovation at the Duquesne Union, which is in the heart of campus. We're also very proud of the fact that we've recently earned a Star Silver rating for the Sustainability Achievement from the Association for the Advancement of Sustainability in Higher Education. So some of the ways we're looking long-term at our environmental and sustainability goals are participating in the Uptown Eco-Innovation District. We've hosted meetings on campus, taking a leadership role in working to reduce energy, water, and greenhouse gas. We're also pursuing district energy, connecting with the College of Medicine as well as our own university footprint. We're working to reduce the university's impact on the environment through our green building practices, green cleaning, and decreasing our water use. We're enhancing our sustainability of operations through our resiliency plan that addresses the city's and the university's stresses and shocks. And across campus, we're working to attain sustainable restaurant certifications across our dying facilities. So I'm going to pass it over to Gateway Associates about our tree canopy and open spaces.
Thank you very much. My name is Ryan Berger with Gateway Engineers. My role in the project here was to establish the existing tree canopy within the IMP boundary. Now, so we collect a lot of information on campus and conducted some analysis to determine the potential, the anticipated 10-year tree canopy goes across the IMP. And with that analysis, it's been determined that the canopy is projected to increase to a total coverage of a little over seven and a half acres, or 15.2% of the IMP boundary. That's an increase of over two and a half acres of the existing canopy. The 15.2% of coverage takes into account the impacts of the proposed IMP projects, but does not include any increase from additional plantings. For that portion of discussion, I will turn it over to Lisa Dugan of Up Studios.
Thank you, Ryan. So through the preservation and the growth of existing trees and the strategic planting of new trees, we have basically 0.19 additional acres due to tree planting. So as Ryan mentioned, the projected tree canopy being 7.58. And so these new tree plantings are actually enhancing and adding on top of that number. Now, the tree placement, and there's a diagram that does accompany this, was coordinated with Duquesne University so that we are proposing locations for trees that are really feasible for the campus, maintaining the functionality and the programming of the open spaces while enhancing that overall tree canopy. And I did want to note that this open space diagram that's showing the enhanced tree canopy is actually being utilized by the university today. And they have actually planted 15 new trees at Berdier Commons, you know, with the placement being derived from this mapping. So it is, it is real and it is being used, which is exciting. And then lastly, I just want to touch on the, there's a slide that kind of shows a couple of examples of the open space on campus from Assumption Commons to Berdier Commons, Academic Walk. The campus really embraces a variety of open spaces that are geared towards everything from learning to programming, socialization, and they also provide spaces for quiet reflection as well. Now I'm going to hand off to Mike Albright to discuss stormwater management.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Albright with Gateway Engineers. Our firm worked on the stormwater management portion of the IMP. As you're aware, the campus is an urban campus with limited open space and existing stormwater management facilities. In the existing conditions of the of the campus, impervious area is 11.8 acres. The impervious area makes up about 38.1 acres. So in proposed conditions, the university is proposing to reduce the impervious area by approximately 0.23 acres, or it equates to about 10,000 square feet, just through the future developments that are proposed. So essentially, a quarter acre of reduction of previous areas planned just through these current proposed developments and added open spaces areas alone. On top of that, the green infrastructure BNP's will be considered to manage stormwater management for all of the individual developments as they come along, which we have outlined in the IMP document. So those two items will be the basis for meeting the long-term goals of reducing the impervious area on campus by about a half percent, as well as meeting the current and future stormwater management regulations for the city. So I'll pass it off now for the neighborhood enhancement strategy.
This is Rod Dobish again. You know, our approach to this has to fall with our spirit and mission. And we want to build authentic relationships. We want to be open, teachable and reflective. One of the things our spirit and started, and that's how they founded this university, walk with people on the margins. We want to value diversity. We want to responsible social justice, not just locally, but across the world. And you know, we're trying to be an open campus to everyone. And you can see it in the reflection of our student body. So that is really our presentation. I do appreciate you guys' time. And we wanted to open it up if you had any questions or comments for us.
Well, thank you. Does that, so that exhaust the centers that you have? All right, so our next part of this section is typically to do public comment. So are there any registered speakers? If so, you have three minutes to address. Right now, I don't have anyone on my list. So is there anyone? There's no one in chambers. Is there anyone online would like to talk before I move it over to council members? All right, so we're going to move over to Councilman Lavelle. Do you have any comment?
Sure, no questions, but I do have a comment. I just want to thank Mr. Dobish as well as Mr. Generet and the entire team. They've been good community partners. They updated the community, do every step of the process. And to the best of my knowledge, all the community partners are also supportive. And so I'm favorable for us moving this, putting this on our agenda and voting it forward.
All right, well, I'll make sure this is, thank you, Councilman. I'll make sure this is on our agenda next week. I just would like to say thank yous as well. Thank you to Corey and William and everyone over there at City Planning and and Zoning that worked to get this complete. And then everyone from Duquesne, thanks for, you know, putting forth your best effort. I know that I've been to the luncheon for the new College of Medicine and it was a nice presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing what you all can do with that. If there's anything you could do for Fifth Avenue, I mean, that that's a, you guys drive on Fifth Avenue lately, that's a mess. It'd be, it'd be nice if 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 that was involved in the in the project, but I'd probably not. But with that said, that's probably like Pew you say, I'll have to ask you, Councilman Lavelle. Yeah, we've exhausted all the business and and we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.